Let's just do a show of hands then to reconvene open session. All in favor? Very good. We'd like to welcome the rest of you to our meeting this evening. If you would stand and say the pledge with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We will start with special recognitions this evening. And we have lots of good things to share this evening. First of all, I would like to recognize our student representatives. They are quote "the first group," first ever. It's historical.
Historical.
Not hysterical, but historical. There might have been some hysteria at some times, I don't know. But we want to express our gratitude for you guys serving, all three of you. We had Ben Font and Kylie Outlaw and Meredith Aguado. We've been most impressed with your service and your dedication and your creativity and all of the things that you've done. You went above and beyond. And we are most appreciative and very grateful. And we have three medals that we would like to present to the three of you this evening. So if you would come forward and stand, Dr. Freeman's going to get those for you. You're fine. This is just a small token of our gratitude. So congratulations. We appreciate everything that you did and we're most proud of you. We were just being formal, sorry. So let's turn this way so you can wave to the camera. Keep turning this way. And after the meeting this evening, if you would like to express your appreciation and tell them how wonderful they were, we'd love for you to have that opportunity. We'll have some little piece of cake and a chance for you to, you know, talk to them and congratulate them on a job well done. So, very good.
Thank you.
And later on in the recognition section, Dr. Freeman will be introducing our new candidates, our new representatives. And so we're excited to get to know them as well. All right. Let's move on and we'll hear from the junior high about some of the fun things and exciting things that they've been doing.
On the evening of Thursday, October 19th, Hillsborough attended the all district band auditions at Jefferson High School for East Central Missouri Honor Band. Students from schools in five different counties auditioned for spots in the ensemble. Many sections had as many as 70 students auditioned and four of our eighth grade students were named to the band. That was Carmen Huntbraker for flute, Appilia Nassau for clarinet, Ian Shelton for trumpet, and Katie Arnold for trumpet. Many congratulations to these young people on their fine achievement. Our National Junior Honor Society also sold ghost grams for cancer. We're really proud of this because it came from a student, Matt Lehman, one of our eighth graders, brought forward the idea of selling ghost grams to raise money for the American Cancer Society. Ghost grams are a little message attached to a turtle pop dressed up like a ghost. Overall, the National Junior Honor Society raised $150 for the American Cancer Society. The students want to continue to help those scholars, so they're going to sell candy grams, or they sold candy grams for Christmas with a message in candy canes. This was another example, a student-led donation charity coordinated by Mrs. Crystal Merrily, our National Junior Honor Society sponsor.
Mr. Alice?
Yes?
Do you mind if I interrupt you a moment?
Yes.
You go ahead and read off of Mr. Redenhour's screen, please.
Am I wrong, Mom?
I think you can read from my table.
And no one stopped me.
I thought you had something different.
We could have kicked you.
I actually tried to turn these off, I thought it was very nice.
Yeah, wonderful job and I'm glad we got to hear it again.
Little worry, ghost grams didn't catch them off.
All righty for Christmas, aren't you, Keith?
Hey, this is National Junior Honor Society. They've got a candy food drive.
They have been so busy.
This is Crystal Merrily, see? We're named the largest candy food drive in the last 15 years at Hillsborough Junior High. Our students and parents were responsible for donating 1,435 cans to Hillsborough families. We're blessed to be part of such a good community. We also had a penny drive, I think recently. Junior High would like to recognize the student council students and sponsors for their efforts in coordinating a successful penny drive. Students donated a total of $1,222.8 that was used by Christmas presents for Hillsborough students. Student Council sponsored by Mrs. Jackson and Miss. Thank you.
Okay. I believe the high school has quite a bit to share with us.
We do, we have a lot to share. The Learning Center students, such a legend for Rebus, they collected toys for Hillsborough Food Pantry last year. They collected over 600 toys and we're getting really good results. They got great results this year. Do you have a number?
It was not quite as good, it was closer to 500.
All right.
Still fantastic.
That's awesome. But they are the only source for toys in the Hillsborough Food Pantry and the Hillsborough Food Pantry is very grateful. The Learning Center students helped, they did help actually. They presented Elks with their holiday food baskets for families in need on December 14th. And then they were helping today at the Mathville State School. At the state school, they assisted at a student's Christmas party, helping the students play games, make crafts, et cetera. And they did that for the first time last year. And this year, the director called and invited them back and they had a really good time. I already heard really great things about that. So, good job, Women's Students. Our Missouri Options Program, which is also housed at the Learning Center, had two students take the High Set, which before 2014 was known as the GED, test in November and they both passed. And now they're on work release and will be graduating in May. So that's a great thing that now is wanting to hear about.
And no retakes.
And no retakes, that's right. And the National Honor Society inducted 46 new members on November 16th. And Ms. Faroff did send me the names of those students, but I thought maybe we could just make more concise. Those inducted have to have a 3.5 GPA or higher and display strong character, provide community service, and demonstrate leadership potential. So that was awesome, 46 new members. Our HHS Tripod, which is new this year, but that is a group, it stands for Try to Put Off Drinking. They are the Tripod trained students, there are 14 of them. They visited all the high school health classes and talked with students about the dangers of teen drinking. And that went over really well. And then 14 juniors and seniors in the High Step program, which is high school taught education program, visited the fourth grade classrooms on November 28th and 29th. And the High Step group taught a lesson on bullying and mean behavior. The fourth grade students were an awesome audience and the High Step students were impressive in their teaching. And our HHS Foods classes participated in a catering lab and they prepared and served dinner for the hospitality room during the Gene Steich course basketball tournament. So I love that, I love seeing that application. And then the HHS Jack students, Zane Braddie, Sarah Jackson, Tara Smith, and Taylor Wright were chosen to attend the National Student Leadership Academy in Washington DC earlier this month. They had the opportunity to talk with Congressman Jason Smith and tour the United States Capitol as well as attending complete leadership workshops. And they represented us very well. FCCLA used proceeds from the Father Daughter Dance to purchase holiday gifts and coats for local children in need. Over the last four years, FCCLA has purchased gifts for over 75 children. And then the Marcy Football Team shared a lot of information with us. They finished the season with nine wins and four losses. They were the MAFC conference champions for the third straight year. They have won 14 straight conference games. The 2017 Hawks were also Class 4 District 1 champions. 10 athletes were selected to the all district team. First team all district were Michael Keller, running back, Joseph Marchut at defensive end, Zach Bodway at outside, or no, I'm sorry, offensive guard, Luke Skaggs at running back and Joe Garner at running back. Second team all district selection were Chase Green at defensive back, Paul Stewart at defensive end, Zach Bodway at, what is that, LD? Mike Locke at outside tackle, Tyler Isaacson at quarterback. And additionally, two players received all state honors, Michael Keller and Zach Bodway. And finally, head coach Lee Freeman was selected the MAFC Conference Coach of the Year for the fourth straight year and was also named the SEMO Regional Coach of the Year for the second year in a row. And then as we go down, we see some familiar faces there because seven students from HHS Myers were selected for the East Central All District Honor Choir. Those students were selected from approximately 400 other students who auditioned from more than two dozen schools. So from left to right, you have Ben Font, Dawson Bower, Morgan Goode, Ryan Mayberry, Jacob Pixon, Peter Moravec, and Aaron Johnston. And then out of that group, two students from the high school were selected for the Missouri All State Honor Choir. I believe you know Mr. Ben Font, he was selected as base for the second year and Jacob Pixon was selected as a first tier alternate. They will be rehearsing with other All State Choir students for the next few weeks and will perform at the Missouri Music Educators Conference in Tantera in January. And then the following students were selected to All State Honorable Mentioned Band, Miranda Lee, Chair Trumpet, All State Honorable Mentioned Band, and Logan Howard, Second Chair Trumpet and All State Honorable Mentioned Band. And that is it for me. Yeah, that's high school's news.
And were you going to introduce for us?
I am going to introduce our newest student representatives. We have with us tonight Ms. Molly Tully and Josh Lachamy, and they are going to introduce each other. Because I wanted you to get to know them.
Good.
Well, this is Josh Lachamy. He's very involved in school and he's a friend to everyone, so I think he's a great choice to be on the board and I'm very glad he's one with me.
This is Molly. She's really just like an all-around genuine person, really cares for everybody. She's really involved in the school and just like crazy smart, so. She really just puts up with everybody, like no matter who you are, she just wants to be your friend, so.
We look forward to having you join us next month.
And Josh and Molly have already met with our outgoing, our senior student representatives. They met once and formally to just get to know each other and then the second time they had an actual business-type meeting, so the transition's going to be very smooth.
Very good. Well, that's exciting. Dr. Tully is going to share some information about STEM.
Yes, the Hillsborough School District is one of five school districts in the San Blas area and the only one in Jefferson County to be chosen to be part of the STEM IP partnership with STEM Act and Washington University. A district team spent three days at Washington University this past summer creating a district plan for STEM integration that has been put into place beginning with the start of this school year in K through six. In return, Washington University will be giving our district, and they have given our district, $30,000 over the next three years to enable us to fully integrate STEM into our schools K through six. Most recently, a district team consisting of Lindsay Reeve in the primary, Beth Sansis and Stephanie Franklin from the elementary, and Lizzie Sillo from the intermediate, along with Mr. Redenhour and myself, we presented at the World Headquarters of Emerson to the STEM Act team members responsible for funding our $30,000 donations. Representatives from Amherst, AT&amp;T, Boeing, Centene, Express Group, McDonald Family Fund, Villacore Sigma, Monsanto, Washington University, and Lowe's Cargo were all attendance. The funders were updated on the district progress as well as how we have begun to spend some of our donation money. This is an exciting and wonderful opportunity for the Hillsborough School District.
Very good. Lots of great things happening in our district. That's always fun to hear about. All right, we have a visitor who would like to address the board this evening. Mr. Zoran Lasik? Lasik, sorry. And you're welcome to sit here. And we will give you three minutes, or five, three minutes to address your issue. And just so you know, we may or may not discuss it this evening.
Sure. Board members, I would like to start off by thanking you for allowing the Boy Scouts of America a safe and inviting location for our units to meet each week. My name is Oren Lazic and I'm the district director for Boy Scouts of America where I serve all of Jefferson County. How many young people benefit from the character traits and skills learned in our program? We have watched many young scouts develop and become lifelong scouts for the tax and troops here in the Hillsborough. Boy Scouts of America has been chartered by Congress since 1915 and it's one of the nation's largest and most prominent family-based youth development organizations. The Boy Scouts provides program for young people that build character, trains them in the responsibilities of participating in citizenship, and develops personal fitness. As shown in the independent research done by Tufts University in 2015, which monitors character traits of scouts versus non-scouts, scouting programs positively impact youth, help students succeed in school, and scouts who are more engaged in the program are more cheerful, helpful, and kind and have higher future expectation in international self-regulation. All other school districts in Jefferson County, Fox, Festus, Jefferson R7, Crystal City, Dunkland, Windsor, Northwest, Grandview, DeSauvres, Sunrise allows access to Boy Scouts of America and other patriotic organizations while respecting the instruction time. The Boy Scouts of America is the title of 36 organizations chartered by US Congress as an educational institution. With this opportunity to gain school access, we'll be more likely to align the Hillsborough School District mission with the Boy Scouts of America and allow more young people into the program. Getting school access will allow for in-school promotion of scouting programs, which includes flyer distribution, open house booths, as well as giving time to the scouting professionals and volunteers to set up a time for the school principals to speak to the students in form of 34 minutes-long rallies. Some schools allow classroom rallies while others allow lunchroom rallies. Currently, Hillsborough only allows flyers to be sent home to the students. Scouting is growing overall in Jefferson County, but it is declining in Hillsborough area. Since in-school access was reduced in 2012, there has been a 70% decline in UU recruits in 70%. In 2011, 63 boys joined scouting from Hillsborough schools. In 2017, the number is only 19. In-school rallies are one of the biggest indicators for whether students and families will join scouting. We ask actually to be in place on this month's agenda, but we're declined. I hope the school access for the Boy Scouts can be put on the agenda for January board meeting so there can be further dialogue regarding this issue. Thank you for your time and all we do for youth of Hillsborough school district. Thank you.
May I ask for an opportunity to make a motion and put them on the January agenda? Can I make that motion?
We have an opportunity to discuss this issue shortly. We are discussing it at a different time.
We are?
Yes. It's in the report.
Okay. Moving on then to the consent agenda. There were quite a few items for you to look through.
I need to accept consent items.
Okay. Any discussion or items to be discussed that you are things you might want to have full questions that you might have to address with administrators?
I had asked Melissa a question prior to and I thought maybe everybody might want to benefit about the flex scheduling at the high school. That, you know, as I read that, that was kind of a term and she further explained, so why don't you address that?
Actually, I have a short presentation about the APR.
Right.
I address it in that.
So let's just pull that for now and then.
I didn't have to pull it. I was just.
Okay, so we want to just come forward then and share your information?
Sure. I just had a very brief presentation. It kind of breaks out the information that you had in your packet just a little bit further. We usually give this presentation earlier in the year, but as you know, the state didn't give us our building summary reports until December the 8th, so that's why we're waiting. Before we get started, I want to let you know obviously that this is just a snapshot of time where we are at that current moment and Desi so graciously provides us with a moving target where sometimes we feel like we have blindfold on trying to hit the bullseye with some of the testing. We've taken three different tests in the past four years, so sometimes it's difficult to compare from year to year when you're comparing apples and oranges. A first standard that we are graded on is the performance standard. This is the district administrators' assessments required to measure student achievement. I'm comparing here 16 to 17. You can see that the elementary both years has hit 100% of their points. We did go down just a tad at the junior high, I'm sorry, we went up a tad at the junior high to 83.3 from 81.3. It is also important to note on the high school, you'll only see one bar there because English II and Algebra I were deemed incomparable to previous years. They were considered valid tests, but we could not compare them to anything else that we've taken previously and that was done by Desi. I will tell you that we did make significant gains in both English, in both Algebra I and in our semites class, but that is unable to be reported through this document. If we would have kept the English II and Algebra I into the report and they would have put it out by building, we would have seen a pretty game in those areas. So academic achievements in areas that we're going to address, you may have heard or may not have heard, Friday's PD activity. It's a very tedious activity where we take either specification reports, those are assessment documents, and we go through each one of our submitted assessments and make sure that they are assessing the standard at the DOK level. It's very tedious. Teachers were overwhelmed with it, but I assure them that they will have all the time that they need to get that done, but it's very important. Also, we're going to start with some grade span meetings to ensure all standards are being addressed in science. Science is the only subject area in fifth grade and in eighth grade that tests over a grade span. So in the fifth grade, they are tested over grades three, four, and five, and in the eighth grade, they are tested over grades six, seven, and eight. And that's obviously proving to be difficult. We are rewriting the science curriculum this year as well. We'll start that after January. And some additional time, opportunity for grades three through six to address our science standards. And we did that by taking that RTI, you know, 30-minute block where we stopped the world to intervene with the kids and gave that back to teachers for professional judgment and they can use that time then to get some more science. The next area that we have is our subgroup achievement. It is important to note that our subgroup achievements are broken out. They can be English language learners, which we don't have any currently, our special education students, and our free and reduced lunch. These students are reported both in this standard and in the academic achievement. So if they do very well, we reap the benefit twice. If they struggle a little bit, we get named twice. This is an area that Matt and I have been looking into a lot because we dropped quite a bit. Overall, our academic achievement went up. That is not indicative with our APR. That is because of our subgroup achievement levels declined. And they did so in a big way in some areas. So again, we are looking at those, some areas that we have addressed. There was an increase in identified special education students from 16 to 17. Also, the eligibility for our MAP-A assessment changed. So some of our kids who were taking the MAP-A were then required to take the MAP, which is a completely different quality. And you can correct me on any of this if I'm wrong. And we are addressing some current areas. We've seen some weaknesses over time in specific grade levels in certain subjects. And Matt and I are identifying those areas and working to improve those. Did you have anything else you wanted to add?
I think the biggest piece is the MAP-A did change, so several of our students had to take the MAP test instead of taking the MAP at year of their certain needs. So that made a big change as well.
Our next performance standard is college and career readiness. We did go back just slightly in the area of the assessment area. We did have a huge graduating class. It's taken off of your senior, your graduating senior data. We did have a huge class with the, well, numbers that the population had. We are looking into some other things as well. You all have graciously decided to pay for those students, those juniors who wanted to take the ACT. That will help. And we are looking into ACT work keys, which is geared more towards those students who are more career-ready instead of college-bound. And we get different points for, I think it's a whole spreadsheet, I can show you if you like, but it's pretty tedious. We also, if you want to flip to the next slide, that'd be great. We also added a couple of courses, if you will remember, into our fax department, which will allow for those students to complete those programs of study and then take that technical skills assessment upon their completion, which then we also reap the benefit of that as well. Our last standard is our attendance. Again, our primary, elementary, and intermediate received 10 points for attendance in both 16 and 17. Junior high went down to 7.5, 75% in high school from 80 to 60. Some things are out of our control when it comes to the attendance. Again, Matt and I have talked a lot about, we have a very transient population for some of our students. And they're not the kids who typically come to school every day. So some of that is out of our control. Also, at our junior high and high school level, the majority of our homebound students are on-homebound for reasons like depression, anxiety, things of that nature. We, when we approve that homebound, we have a treatment plan from a physician in order to approve it. Those treatment plans only last so long, so when they end, the homebound ends. We collect attendance when they're on-homebound, but when that treatment plan ends, the homebound ends. And sometimes we are waiting two or three weeks to get that paperwork back from that physician to continue the homebound services. In the meantime, that student is absent. They're not coming to school. So, you know, some of these things are out of our control. What we are doing to work through some of this is this year, Kathy and along with our administrators came up with a great idea. We're starting to make multiple calls a day instead of just one. So if your student is absent first hour, you're going to get a call at 9 o'clock?
Depends, the building's 9, 9:13, depends on the building.
So we're notifying parents sooner that their child is absent. And then if they were to leave the building, they're also going to get another phone call in the afternoon. So that's helping. We're looking at all of our absentee reports. A lot of what we are seeing is these are the same kids that are chronically absent the whole way through. We're looking at a flex scheduling for some of our high school students in accordance with board policy. We have a couple of kids, we're going to try it out next semester. We can capture their attendance for the full day. If they're with us for two hours, they have 95% attendance and then say they go and take a class at the college, we can capture their attendance for the full school day here, which we are not currently utilizing. We're also looking into some internship options that we can collect their attendance on. And some of those early grads, they'll have to be taken on a case-by-case basis. It's not going to work for all of them, but some of them, again, the same thing. If we can keep them with us for two hours a day and then send them off to college for even a work opportunity, we can then collect their attendance on that. So looking into that as well.
What about students like today who were supposed What about students like today who were supposed to go to college in the morning, but Jefferson College is not in session now?
I don't think we don't take a hit on those kids.
No, because there's no class to count them absent.
So, they don't attend, they come in later?
Some of them do attend because some of them ride the bus. So, we just have an area where we supervise them and...
But you'll have some that don't.
But some of them don't, but they don't, they're not counted absent because they're not in the course that they would be absent from is not session. So, no, we're not taking a hit on that.
I didn't know how that worked.
I'm also looking into the possibility of bringing a home support specialist. We're currently in one of the districts, Jeanne Van Houten, she works K through six and does a lot with attendance, home visits, getting resources, mental health resources for our students, but she does it at K through six. So, we've kind of been throwing around the idea of seeing if that's going to be useful. Karen Fryden has also contacted some of the districts and pulled some data, and Kathy and I just talked about that this afternoon. There are schools who are taking grade, taking a percentage of a student's grade away if they are not in session for X amount of days, which is against everything that we have worked to raise, opposed to obviously reflect mastery. I don't see that as a possibility. The other thing that we have noticed is they are, or several people are giving back the attendance. So, the kids are coming back and making up the time during that instructional time.
Like a Saturday school.
Like a Saturday school. That is not good practice either. So, we are contacting other places, pulling, they're pulling some reports, and we're going to compile all that data and see how we can raise our attendance.
Are there certain days that are a bigger hit than other days? Like, for instance, I'm going to throw this out there, I don't know what's going on, but tomorrow?
I'm sure. I would have to dig back into the... I know that when we did half-day PD days...
Right.
We found that so...
They were very low. Sorry, I missed it.
That is a good one, the video.
Half-days were very low, and our Wednesday of Thanksgiving break was very low, and that was one reason we switched that. Tomorrow will be lighter, but it won't be as bad as those days traditionally were. It are a little...
Well, it's a secondary level that is issue.
We've identified several of those areas.
What I've learned, especially around the Christmas holiday, if it's a Friday, then they might not be here. If you move to Thursday, they might not be here. If you move to Wednesday, there is really no good. But I see that that moving, that Thanksgiving really assisted because there's a lot of traveling. It'll be a short time.
But I also believe that if there's something of value, like, for instance, high school, if we had a final on that last day...
We do.
We were there. You know, we had kids there. But if it's just kind of an assembly and go home, then, you know, not a big deal. So, that's, you know...
Our last area, I'm sorry.
Well, I was just going to say, I had spoken to someone from a different school district who is, and their district is starting, I don't know how to describe it, other than a clinic of sorts on campus that they're not paying for at all. And so, if a kid comes in and there's, instead of sending them home, you know, and you take a hit, they can send them into this little clinic and see...
A little help clinic.
Yeah, on campus, and it offers other services too besides medical. And they're seeing that that's been helped for...
Is that a change?
No. So, it's helping their attendance, which, and it's been no cost to them, which I would like, I'd ask for more information about that to see, and maybe at the upper grade levels, that might be helpful.
Sure.
I don't know. I mean, I know we have nurses and all of those on staff, but instead of sending them home, they could still be on campus in the facilities.
Is that knowledge, the Mercy, did you know?
I don't know.
I was just kidding.
She's going to send me the information, but I just thought it was an interesting...
Yes, it will.
Thought it was an interesting concept. So, I'll be getting that for you.
Good.
Hopefully.
Our last area is our graduation rate and as far back as I can dig, we want to just go back. So, is there any questions? Simplified version. Do you want to be...
I appreciate you sharing. I think that was helpful. Good to know.
Thanks.
Okay, so we still have a motion on the floor about, for the consent agenda with all of those items, A through H. Any other questions or thoughts before we vote? All right, all in favor of approving the items on the consent agenda, raise your hand. All right, thank you. All right, that gets us then into the reports, and we'll begin with the superintendent's report.
All right, just a few updates, actually several updates. As many of you know, our security van was involved in an accident. So, we're in the market for a new security van or vehicle that we can use. Insurance is offering us $3,100. It was totaled. With our $1,000 deductible, we're at $2,178. The district has the option, which I think Ray and Transportation are looking at, buying it back off salvage for $318. It does have some parts that could be utilized, I think, in one of the technology vans. So, that's some discussion going on now. But as at this point, we've been using the professional development vans. There's not been a lot going out, so we still have some time, but we need to begin to start shopping around because as January rolls around, those PD vans will have to be utilized. So, just kind of an update there, it's not salvageable. We'll try to get you some numbers on some possible vehicles that are around and get that back to you as quick as we can. Next, I had Mr. Reno do a little research and wanted to kind of give you an update with regard to the Hall of Fame and cross-country and kind of bring you up to speed on that.
I'll go ahead and apologize in advance. No offense, Dr. Isaacson, but I went with Dr. Isaacson on you guys. I got about 100 pages worth of information here that shrunk down to 50-something.
Other graphs?
No graphs. No charts.
And you did it without her eyes, so...
Was it forecast four or five, whatever? I got it.
So, let's talk about the Hall of Fame first. The Hall of Fame was brought up a couple of months ago by the Foundation Director, Mr. Larry Wells. He talked about the school starting a Hall of Fame of sorts. On this information here that you have, first of all, I want to thank Tom Wolfhorn, the Assistant Principal and Director of Athletics at Stanwood for Washington High School. They put this together as a presentation at the national conference, and it literally has everything you want to consider when thinking about creating a Hall of Fame. The other thing I would say is, instead of being an athletic Hall of Fame, we're looking at an overall school Hall of Fame, so where you see athletic, just think school. But it goes through what you're going to want as far as how to start it, your committee, your budget, what you're looking at as far as your parameters, what happens if something were to happen with someone that's in the Hall of Fame. I mean, there's a lot of things to consider here. It's not just something that you do, if you know what I mean. It's a lot of involved work that, it's something that definitely is worthy here at Hillsborough High School. But I asked the question I'll have for the board, and something you can think about after looking at overall this information, is what direction do you want to go? Because you can run a Hall of Fame and you just have a small banquet instead of, or there are some that have elaborate banquets and inductions. They invite their family in, they do professional photography. The evening banquet that can cost upwards of $5,000 to $8,000 for the meal and everything. The other thing that I thought of when I was texting Dr. Corwin while I was in Arizona is your space. We're kind of limited space-wise, how are we going to do it and all that? And on the very back of your information, the very last page, is a company called Wall of Fame. They are highly recommended by several, but you can see there that just the TV, and the good thing about the TVs is they're all web-based and they're touchscreen, so we can put unlimited data in there. We can put every year's sports going all the way back to 1939, remember, when we originally opened as a high school? And if we can dig up the pictures on it, we scan them in, they help us do all that. But you can see what that comes to cost. The TV itself is $12,000. To have a stand like you have in the middle is 15, and then to have it enclosed in a wall is 15. Something like that is probably the route that I would recommend and that I see because we're going to run out of wall space to flex. So, something that's in a centralized location that you can have, and there are similar companies to this as well, so this isn't the end-all-be-all. This is just an example for the board to look at what we'd be considering. At the high school, I'm not quite sure where we put that yet, but I'm sure after myself and Dr. Freeman and everybody got together and looked at our different options, we don't want to hide it somewhere. We want it to be prominent, and we all know that most of the traffic is right there in the main doors going down to the athletic hall or whatnot. So, somewhere in that area right in there, to me, is the most ideal. The question is just where? Because again, we want people to look at it, we want people to view it, we want it to be prominent in our setting if this is the route we choose to go.
What I did like about that, and I started to interrupt, if you look at the top picture, $12,000. If you look at the very bottom of the frame, that was pretty neat, Ed, how they had the touchscreen.
Yeah.
The first bullet might be the academic Hall of Fame. The second bullet might be the athletic Hall of Fame.
Yeah, so you can line, you can line the bottom with a bunch of different tabs, and that's what this, and I sent Dr. Corwin some screenshots that he could better see on his phone, but you, like he said, you can have your athletic Hall of Fame, your academic Hall of Fame, your choirs, your band, all that, and each one's its own individual touchscreen, and you touch it, and it brings up the library for everything that's there. Getting it started, it's going to be cumbersome and getting all the information for that, but I do think we have people in the community and people that have been here for a long time that have a lot of information that they will share with us, that they will allow me to scan and then be able to integrate that into whatever we decide to do. And a lot of historical data, we'll be able to find. It's just a matter of taking the time to get it all done, you know? But once it's set up, then it's just maintaining it. The criteria, how are you going to elect people? What does that look like? In this information I handed you, they have a form that they use that's like a nomination form. They have their criteria all lined out. They have the maximum number of like two teams per year, so you're not going to have like four teams a year, something like that. Six individuals, community members, friends of the school, things like that. Like I said, the information is a lot. I'd appreciate if you have time to look at it over break and all that, and then in January, if you want to discuss where we go from here, I'm totally open to that. Any questions you guys have?
The prices that are listed, so I see there's multiple sizes for each one. What does that price represent?
That's...
The middle range?
When I talked to, a fellow named Jennifer, I already talked to Jennifer, she said that that price includes whatever size you go with.
Oh, okay. So, whether you go 32...
And it also, it includes everything except the, it includes everything except the wiring install, which we could probably offset some of that. But then it includes the maintenance yearly, and they help you upkeep everything, and they have their, it's web-based, it's not on our servers or anything of that. I don't know if that matters to you or not, Kathy, but just throw it out there. But it's the lifetime maintenance of it. You know, the one scary question I have is, well, what happens if this company fails to exist anymore? They're one of you. And that's, I guess, a risk we take with any company, for that matter. They've been around for a while, and I've called some schools that have them and talked to some schools that have them, and everyone's very complimentary and very happy with their services.
It's a neat idea.
It is. I like the touchscreen idea of it because, I mean, we could put...
Infinite information.
Yeah, infinite amounts of information we can put on this touchscreen that you literally just... And when I broke it down, like, all are all-state athletes. You can click on a year and see the all-state athletes, or you can click on all-state athletes and bring them all up. The name, and then when you click on their name, it brought up their bio and what they accomplished and things like that. It's really neat.
Dan can walk up and show his son, look at what we did.
So, it is a novel concept. It's an awesome idea. For not to be in charge of it, no. No, it's just, it's going to be cumbersome. It's going to take a lot of people and...
It's going to take help. I mean, you have the athletic side, the athletic side, the historical side.
You're going to have a committee, you're going to have all these things to go into, and then, like I said, just gathering everything.
The criteria, who needs to go in?
Absolutely.
Why? I know it was brought up at one point to have, that it would be difficult for the school to do all of the policing, now that you're organizing this, and that maybe an outside group such as the Hillsborough Foundation be maybe a big part, have a big role, especially since that was kind of where it came from. Sort of. I don't know if he was representing the foundation or not, but I don't remember. But, I mean, I would like to share that information with Mr. Wells, and he would be a great historian as well. So, I don't know how the board would feel about that.
I personally, I look at this as being, coming from the outside, and most of the work is being done as far as the committee from the outside and one or two target people.
It might not be a blended thing.
Well, yes, internally, but the nominations and all that should be from...
When you look at the information that's entered, it is a very much blended committee. They had several people who represented the school, they had community members, they had foundation members, I mean, business owner, I mean, it was several, several.
How was this financed or funded?
Great question.
Previous schools? The schools you spoke of?
Union for Gibson State did a lot, they did a mass campaign of fundraising, and the school helped out, things like that. I don't, I don't know what our situation would be.
Is this something we think the foundation would be interested in helping fund? Well, our business, would there be a place, you know, like on Facebook, there's always ads, or if there's a place for...
When you look on, in this packet of information, you will see a letter that the school wrote that just that they are doing a fundraising campaign to help offset the costs of starting their Hall of Fame. There's a million routes we could probably go with it. It's not going to be cheap. I mean, it's, you know...
But once you start and get it implemented, the cost really goes down, I hope?
Other than the banquet and the induction.
Yeah, your yearly cost is probably similar to that of our teacher dinner we have in the spring.
Depending on how many are invited.
Depending on how many are invited, how many purchase tickets to it, and things of that nature. You know, if you're only inducting two to three people, you're not going to have the crowd. Now, if you induct a team, you're talking several people, you're going to be pulling... You know, the yearly cost is going to be the banquet, the gifts, representative of the school, you know, timepieces, logos, insignias, you know, what is it that we want to give them for their honor? A plaque, you know? That's things to take into consideration every year on how we do that. I'm all for it, but it scares me, I'll be honest.
Well, sure. So, is that something we need to reach back out to Mr. Wells with?
We can do that. I think at this point, Mr. Reno, when he talked to me, was asking for the board to take this packet and review it, try to give us some direction after you've had time to absorb how this district went forward, so he knew how to roach the conversation with Mr. Wells and the foundation, I think is right, Ed. I want to speak...
Yeah, no, that's exactly right. It's a, we wanted the information. I feel like we've got it put together now, and we can present it and kind of talk about it. We all go back, we'll get it over the next month or so, and then in January, reconvene and see where we go from here. What is the wheel looking for?
Have you talked to local districts, Jefferson County?
And everybody does it different.
As far as like cost, yearly cost?
Yeah, some only recognize them at a game, like at halftime of a game, and they don't want to do much more than that. Too much in way of anything over the top. Some have formal banquets where they sit down, they invite them in, and they have dinner, and they get up, they speak, and then the person being inducted speaks. If we do it, I want to do it right.
I agree.
And I want to do it, I want to do it in a way that it's meaningful, that it means something to those that are getting inducted, and it's something that anyone who comes through the high school and looks at this, they look at it, and they're just, they're kind of overwhelmed almost, like, oh my gosh, look at all this information that we can find. Everything has happened throughout their history.
It could be a big plus for the community.
I mean, you're talking almost 70 years of history. Eighty, we were established in 39. Me, too.
But it was close to the 100. It could be a big, maybe...
It'd be fun.
Seventy-five. Have we done 75?
Thirty-nine, sixty-one, seventy...
We'll pass.
We'll pass 75.
That's right.
Retroactive.
There you go.
Been there almost through all of them.
Okay, well, so you, as a board, I like the suggestion of us to read the material, sit down and maybe share the thoughts that, and see if Mr. Wells would be interested, or the foundation, because if they're not willing to participate... Because if they're not willing to participate, then might be a moot point. I don't know.
Sure.
So just to kind of make a connection with him, is that, is that fair to say for the rest of us at the table?
Sure.
And then we'll visit again in January.
Absolutely. Could we speak cross-country now?
Yes.
Okay. As far as cross-country comes, Mr. Wells also brought up the fact of naming the course after Mr. Schultz. I think naming the course is a bad idea and this is why. The course changes, okay? It's never going to be the same course. We've changed it several times in our existence. However, we have named certain events after individuals. We have the Joe McCray's JV Invitational. We have the Gene Steig's Tour. I think that naming our cross-country event, we hosted for several years after Mr. Schultz, would be a great honor. I think he'd be very humble and I would be totally in support of that and the fact that he did start cross-country here at, at the school. So what I was thinking was I'd like to tell you that my recommendation would be to name the cross-country meet after Frank Schultz and then formally bring it to you all in January in an executive summary detailing everything and then have you take a formal vote on it, go from there.
Okay, so you're picking an event?
It'll be our cross, we host a home cross-country meet every year, so it'll be that cross-country meet.
So that's an invitation?
It's an invitational, just like our track meets on a yearly basis. We've hosted it for probably fifteen to twenty years now.
And that's pretty big.
We get a lot of turnout, especially at the Leon Hall's. It's a pretty big meet.
Okay. That sounds good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Just a couple of things, architectural updates. We need to let you know about a memorial that we're going to have to move at the elementary, correct, Ray?
Primary.
Primary. There's one at the elementary, one at the primary that have to be moved due to the construction projects. So if you have any questions or people coming in saying, hey, my memorial's gone, Ray moved them. So I do want to reach out and hopefully...
Throw it under the bus.
I do want to thank Scott Reed, our just work on getting the plaque. He sent us a picture of that, Will B., and appreciate the lack here on that. I had a parent come and was missing a plaque, excuse me, a sister, wasn't it?
No, it was the mom.
It was the mom. We have the plaque back and we're going to be getting it put out there in place. I believe the policy is seven years that it goes back to the family. Is that right, Ray?
Yes.
I think it's seven years. So in this instance, when we move these memorials, we're going to be putting them back close to where we can. But just wanted to kind of highlight that too. On page two, if we can scan down there, please, on page two, this, I have informational readings, but this is actually a letter and I thank Zorn for coming up and speaking with us. And you see that the letter here kind of outlines some of the things that he spoke about regarding Boy Scouts of America and their participation at Hillsborough Schools. Now, as Zorn said, in 2012, which was prior to my arrival in the district, their access to the buildings with regard to the students, whether it be in the classrooms for three to five minutes or into the cafeteria, ended. And I didn't know why when I arrived in 2013, so I called for legal guidance to determine why that decision was made. The reason it was made is because the district has a limited open forum. And by that, it means that if you open doors for one group, you open doors for all groups. And as Zorn said and I agree, you know, when you talk about the mission and the vision of the district, there are some groups whose mission and vision does not align with what you have as a district. By opening the doors, you create not necessarily a limited open forum, but an open forum that any group that wants to have access to your kids would then be granted access. So think about that as you open that door up. So that's why the Boy Scouts had that end. Now, we did, in my first couple of years here, have the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, youth football, youth cheer, I think youth wrestling, if I'm not mistaken, would come and man the tables at the open houses as you come in. I had received several complaints from parents that, that everything would get crowded because folks are sitting there trying to fill out their paperwork and they couldn't get through and take their kids to classrooms. So what we wound up doing was leaving the table out for open house with contact number and information for each of the groups as well as any forms that they had. And it kind of realigned what that mission was and that was come to the school for open house to see your child's chief teacher and drop off school supplies and then take the documents home and fill those things out. As Zorn did say, we send every flyer home that comes to us from the Boys and Girl Scouts. I think in my five years with the district, there was only one flyer that we had to have fixed that had a wrong meeting time or meeting place. We opened the doors after hours to the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, for them to have a meeting place. But we did include this letter for you to review as I told Zorn that we would and just need some direction from the district. That's the historical part that I know. And if, you know, the board feels that this needs to put on the agenda for the discussion, I can most certainly give you that and any legal opinion that you need with regard to limited open forums.
I had a question about limited forums. It's my understanding that if they're listed under Title 36, that anytime we open the doors to a nonprofit, we have to let an organization listed under Title 36 equal time. Is that correct?
Well, I can tell you that when you open it up, you open it up. That's what you run the risk of.
The time, anybody listed under Title 36?
I'm not for sure. I could check on that. That's not my...
Yeah, we definitely need to follow up on that because the way I understand it...
And you read on what now?
Title 36, it's a U.S. statute. Title 36, patriotic organizations. Anytime we allow a non-for-profit on campus, then anyone listed underneath that list is given equal time. So for instance, as an example, PTO is at open house. We're handing out flyers, not PTO, we're a non-for-profit.
Right, but PTO is an extension of the school.
But because we are a non-for-profit though, the way that, that U.S. statute reads is that anyone listed under Title 36 is allowed equal time.
Okay.
So I think this is something we should review.
So does that mean churches that offer daycares or after-schools?
If they're listed under Title 36.
Well, if they're nonprofit organizations, you'd have to let them in the school district?
No.
In the building?
No, if we allow a nonprofit on campus, then those listed under Title 36 are given equal time. You can pick and choose your nonprofits. You can pick and choose your nonprofits, but that Title 36, all of those are allowed equal time.
Okay.
I'd like to say, since this sounds, I mean, I appreciate Ann she's putting this forward, but I don't know anything about Title 36 if it's on it. So I, I do have a concern with them asking to be placed on the agenda and not receiving that. So how does that happen?
That was me.
Okay.
I, I wanted us to have an opportunity to discuss things before we put it on the agenda. And it was, we decided, I decided to put it in the reports to lay it out there. Because normally when a visitor comes and addresses us, we don't discuss that till maybe later.
Okay.
And that gave us the opportunity to do that.
Much like what happened with Mr. Wells.
Right.
You know, he came in, and I get that, but I think since this sounds like a pretty interesting item, I would be happy to have it on the agenda again. And then the other thing I wanted to say, Dr. Corman, we've talked about this with open house being just chaotic. And I, I think that, because we've talked about maybe changing it, and I know this sounds like a lot, but just one school for one night. Because, I mean, for any parent that has a kid in more than one building, it's a nightmare. Whether we have tables for Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts...
I think regardless, it's going to be a nightmare the way it's set up.
I think it is too, but I just think, I mean, I know we've talked about that. That's not really about Boy Scouts.
Well, we've already talked about it as administrative team, with Heath Allison, myself, and all the administrators sat around the table and talked about that, all the cabinet, about how can we do that in the school calendar, how that function will look like and the plausibility of even making an add-in, because if it's not possible, because pretty soon you're pushing it all the way back, so you have five different open houses and how's that going to look structurally? Without teaching stuff?
I know. I think we should look at it, though. We don't have to have five. We could have, at least for the younger buildings, I mean, even for the people that have a kid or that, that work here in the district and have to be here for an open house and have, you know, they need to get to their children's open houses too, but with both schools or, you know, both buildings going, it's pretty hard.
I just, well, back to the Boy Scouts.
Right, I'm sorry.
Back to the Boy Scouts. I just find it very interesting that all the other school districts in Jefferson County can work with them and we can't on time with students.
Do we have any other organizations that come in and address kids?
Not my knowledge.
We do.
Who?
As far as nonprofits?
No, any other individuals that come in and address kids. Who do we have?
During, during the school day.
Is that what they want, is that what the Boy Scouts are asking for today?
Yes.
Okay.
And my, my question has always been around this. In our school policy, it identifies scouts as being endowed or approved.
And it says to use the 36 in their building.
So to me, that put them in a whole different category.
Right, because they're under Title 36.
What is Title 36?
It's in the policy.
Let's look at that.
We need to look at that.
We'll call the attorney, get legal opinion.
I just looked it up here and most of the, basically, all the organizations in this have something to do with patriotism or armed forces.
And the Girl Scouts.
American Gold Star Mothers, American Historical Association, hospitals.
Well, was the fear from the attorney that another organization that comes in could...
Have the same access.
But they won't unless they're listed on Title 36. They are specifically listed.
I'm not debating that. I mean, I think...
But do you always know what their forum is? You know what I'm saying? Because they could say we're this way and then what's...
They have to provide documentation.
Well, I, I'm just, just saying, I don't...
Could we, could I miss then that we do place this on the agenda for discussion?
Yes, we can.
And then we can all look up at this Title 36's and...
Right.
If you go to our policies, there's a link and it takes you directly to it.
So Renee made a motion, I need a second, Ben and Beth, to place it on the agenda for next time. So all in favor of doing that? And you'll get back with us with information and address it with Selinda again.
All right. Other than that, I'm scanning down real quick, just see, just put the calendars in there for your review so we'll know what's coming up, what we have as a board and central office in December and January. But that's all I have.
Okay. Question. The architect and the construction and all of that, in this, it said a spring bidding process?
Yes, ma'am.
My thought process was that we were actually going to do foundation and that kind of work before school was even out.
It is.
It is? Okay.
They're coming in January for a full update to the board.
Okay.
After they finish all the drawings and talk to you. But yes, they're talking February bid, April award bid, later, early March, excuse me.
Spring bidding process.
Yes.
To me, spring is March and April and live in construction my life.
No, they're, they're planning to do what they can in school still in session.
That's what I thought.
And then really roll the equipment when school's out.
Okay. I just like...
Okay, so your report is concluded?
I'm done, yes, ma'am.
All right. Then Mr. Best, Director Best, we'll hear from you about facilities and grants.
Good evening.
Hi.
All right. Wow, so do you remember one? Ten reports are short this month. I'm reading why, it's because we've been doing a lot more studying. We've been working on the bond issue, as you know, with the building concept. I'm going to follow up with Dr. Corman, start a little bit, give you more information as well. Next Wednesday, Thursday and Friday, the 27th, right, for Christmas, because I'll come back to, we do. So for us, it's a big day, enjoy and holiday. But anyway, we start with architects and engineers with the boarding process. Now, what that'll be is our soil samples and they'll get all of that information, gather it up in three days. That'll concern for the junior high, primary and elementary. Those reports will be back hopefully to the engineers and architects, I'm going to see within a few weeks following, okay? They also will be on staff, Roy and Chris, and two of the engineers, one is our electron, our electrical engineer, and the other one's our mechanical engineer, will be on staff here at the school on the 27th. Mr. Allison already has heard this, so he knows they might be around to talk to him. But they will be here and they will give us more data of what they're going to be looking at. What they're looking at is all of our systems. They have to look at all these ceilings, they have to look at all these systems we've got going, where all the power's coming from, everything, so quite a bit is going on. So we want to keep you up to date as we go move forward. The reason why I took a lot of time in this past month looking up data for them, we have a couple of other issues that came up. One, in 1994, we started drawing plans for primaries that filled with B-wing and additional of the second part of the cafeteria. In 96, as you know, it's completed. Unfortunately, those architects at that time, as many do, bid out all their engineering projects as they go. Engineering corporations at that, that time, which was located in Bloomsville, went out of business. However, when the school district was handed all their blueprints, they got only the structural work in place, leaving out all mechanical and all electrical. So what happened there, we've dug through many piles trying to get that data from the architects and engineers, because why? That's what we're adding on. So without that information, it makes it harder to do their jobs. So with the help of the city of Hillsborough, we went through theirs because they have to have those final copies too. Well, they didn't give them either, so. So we just prayed we was going to start all over, but I contacted a company out of Illinois that bought out K2, which is out of Bloomsville, which they bought out. So they was able to help us with what we needed with the electrical part. Our, the mechanical part was not there, so they couldn't do anything with us. But talking with Roy and all the engineers, we're very fortunate, they think they don't need that information, so we're not having to have them redraw anything, which is very much we don't need, because they were going to have to make sure all how those, all the systems will tie together. So we're good to know, they're going to draw what they got to draw, go hook on what they got to hook on, so. But it was a lot of work.
Yeah, thank you for doing all that investigating.
It was fun, believe me. I found some plans from, you know, Bust Drive and stuff. It was great.
Saving, you might need it.
I did. Check it all out now. Following up on some other things that was going on in that aspect of it too. This has to do with the field down here and the fieldhouse and the roadway. I have been in touch with Mr. Box again. Of course, we'll not be able to finish the project now, of course, till spring, because you don't know how the weather's going to be. But now Prudence Out Picture totally, which was a corporation that was doing the work because they did not fulfill their contract and they will be going after them legally to complete that part of that part what they needed it from them. But in the meantime, springtime, we'll be looking at it again, getting the road finished paved, which is right there by the fieldhouse. That soil project, they got it finished, a little touch-up on the field. And then, of course, Dr. Corman, myself and any board member that might be on the facilities, when we get ready to do the walk final, we'll be invited to do the final with them. So I'll keep you posted, we get to them. So that's where we're at on that part. So, that's where we're at on that part, sad news, in case you haven't heard, my assistant lost her son, so in case you have not heard that, she was the one who was in a tragic accident on 55, all that, that week. So it's been kind of a sad mood around our area, but we've been blessed with the fact that everybody's been behind us with the, with our family, whole family, and I know the Boy Scouts with Juanita and Ross, who's, he's a leader, very well involved with it, they've been right there with them. The ones we got that come to the moral at the City Club this past week was very nice, so thank you for that. Let's see what else they got, oh, Sir got hooked up at the maintenance shop, thank you very much for allowing us to get that done, now the city will be off our backs on that part, sorry to speak. The goons that were set in place back in '72, '73 are no longer in place any longer, so we're actually, we can get rid of those guys. Ended up working with Regina down to, that bus drive on that, making sure her light doesn't flood anymore, it would be not nice if we had to do that. And Regina, I have one more thing that we're going to be doing to finalize with the, with the signals, here's where we're at on that. We are going in front of the board for the city of Hillsboro on January 8th to discuss it with them. They are going to get our case where they will consider about not readjusting the lights, because they don't need to do timers too much, we figured that that part out, but we're going to try to be changing light locations a little bit. Now, in phase four, I think it is they're calling it, they're going to finish coming across with the sidewalks in front of here immediate this spring, and when they get that done, which is part of MODOC, they will be putting a sidewalk across, right at the signal line to come up on the northern side of the light that'll come on to Leon Hall. So they will be doing that.
When you present to them, is Kylie and Ben getting to go with you?
They are more welcome to, I just got the information today, so they haven't heard that.
Okay.
But we'll invite them too, of course. And it's open for them, and everybody's invited to those, of course. But we did get that information today, and then the other thing that we're looking at as well, as y'all know, now we know that we own Leon Hall College, found that out.
Finally got our letter, didn't we?
Yeah, we did, we didn't know that for how many years. But anyway, now we're going to be looking at what it'll cost us, I don't know if I be school district, lighting, and what we're working out for the next budget, what it'll cost us to be put a sidewalk from Leon Hall, Business 21, down in front of the candy booth and so forth, to touch into primary, and once we get to the primary side, as y'all know, we've got the roadways widened up for, for students to walk safely, what we need to address the front half of the Leon Hall now, and we will be doing that at that time. So, on that, I wanted to thank all the principals that's been working on the programs and projects, or a lot of homework assignments been going on with what's going on with the building, and the excitement we're going to have as we get further on doing the building, so it's going to be a lot of work, I know Mr. Allison, his team's been really hard at it, so, because he's got a big project, so, but they've done a great job, so, everything, of course, Kathy and her team's been at it too, trying to figure out the, the technical part, so, anyway, happy holidays to everybody.
Thank you.
Any questions or anything?
That explains why he is still talking October and September.
He is, so, anyway, thank you.
All right, technology is up next.
I'm going to hear her voice today.
Okay, she's, she lost it.
Yeah, she lost her voice, it's back there somewhere. We had 137 reporters submitted, 141 completed. EOC testing, we installed software and tested EOC, software, well, that's the software installed, for EOC testing, the high school and junior high. Training, Ethan and Aaron Johnston, they're working towards their Google certification. For the month of December, we performed some team building exercises as well, under our technology curriculum we're currently working on. One of our goals for the tech plan is to develop a vertically lined technology curriculum. We're currently in the process and have established our categories, and we're working on our objectives now, and we're meeting regularly with that. We've updated PCs in the business lab to Office 2016, and we've also updated some PCs in the learning center lab as well.
Thank you, that's good.
Sorry.
No problem. Thank you very much. Okay, Mrs. Gind, for our financial report.
If you look at the graph, it's a good visual, it shows you that we're continuing to behave as we do every year as far as our fund balances go in our operating funds, and that's what we want to see, so we'll start going back up as we start getting our money in the county this month, next month, so that is good. Also, you can scroll down here into the numbers, like that's our numbers, yeah, right there. You can see the numbers that are associated with the graph, so compared to prior year, we're running really good on revenue, we're ahead on revenue, and we're not spending on money quite as fast this year as we were last year, so that's good. We're trending very well right now. I had a note in there on revenue, I did talk to county officials, I didn't know at the time, and the report went out, exactly when we were going to get our payment, but we did on the 13th, so we started getting some money, we should get another pretty big payment before the end of the calendar year, so that will be good, so we'll see. Other than that, we had an audit committee meeting on Monday, I went through the audit process, the items that the auditor asked for and collects when they come and visit us, what they test, and how they test, they were getting current scores, stuff like that. So I went through that process with the committee, what's involved in it, and then we briefly reviewed the audit, and I think answered any questions, you know, a few little questions that were brought up, so.
Thank you, thank you. And our last report, I don't know if our student advisors have any last words they want to share with us?
We would like to thank you guys so much for allowing us to be the two little giddy places to start off the student reps program, it has been a wonderful year for both of us, and we've got a lot of stuff done so that the upcoming advisors can further give you guys these students' opinions of certain issues, so thank you guys so much for allowing us to do this.
Thank you guys, thank you.
It's been a ride.
So she said it all.
Yes.
All right, very good. Thank you for your report. Okay, we will be moving on then to new business, there is no unfinished business at this time.
Correct.
So the first item, is the district audit, you were given the booklet, the audit results by Kelly last month, and we do have a representative here this evening, if you'd like to come and share your findings with us.
Hello, Mark Janisch with Daniel Jones and Associates, and on behalf of Daniel Jones and Associates, I'd like to thank the board for giving us the opportunity to audit Hillsboro school district for the area in June area 2017. I'd also like to thank Kelly and all the staff for how organized information was presented. We as auditors are to look at the district and issue opinions as to whether or not the school district has been presented fairly in all material respects, as any material statements in their financial data, internal controls, and federal programs. We've issued reports on pages, opinions on pages one, forty-four, and forty-nine, and a report on compliance on page fifty-one on this item. So the opinion on page one, the school district received an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which is the highest opinion a district can receive. The opinion on page forty-four discusses how the district was in compliance with state issues such as transportation, budgets, and attendance. The opinion on page forty-nine discusses how the district was in compliance with internal controls, and that the financial statements are free from material mistake. Report on compliance on page fifty-one is a report required by DSC that discusses internal control, which we found no instances of material. One item that was new this year is on page thirty-six, is a new footnote required by GASB 77, that shows tax abatements that affect the district. This information was required by the county, and is presented for informational purposes only. In closing, I would like to thank the board for giving us the opportunity, and congratulate on an excellent audit, and be one of your entertaining questions.
Okay. So no questions about the audit?
Excellent audit, sounds good.
Excellent, it's always good.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the 2016, 2017 district's audit as presented then. All in favor? Okay, very good.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate your work.
The next item has to do with the purchase of smart boards for the intermediate, and you were given the analysis, the cost analysis and justification, so I would like to have a motion to approve the bid of Schiller's Audio Visual Group to purchase eight smart boards for $9,960 for the intermediate. So, thank you, Beth. Second, Renee, any questions about this purchase? Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. Congratulations to the intermediate. Okay, then we're going on to summer school, even though it's still winter, but we need to approve the idea to have summer school, and...
Summer.
Yeah. We don't know where we're going to do that yet. What? They're still in the planning stages of each building due to construction?
Correct.
Okay.
I need to approve full summer school for 2018.
Okay. Thank you. Well, we haven't talked about the rest of it yet, so I...
Do that in a second.
Right. So, we have a motion to approve the full summer school for 2018, and we have a first and a second, correct? So all in favor of approving summer school? All right. The last item has to do with an addition of a behavior teacher for the remainder of the school year into 2018, and...
Primary.
I move to approve funds for the behavior teacher for the primary.
To allocate funds for a behavior teacher, and the second is... Do we need, does anybody need any additional information about that?
I think we figured the cost to be right around between $8,000 for a first-year teacher, and we're going to look at those graduating here at semester. We also have, I'm pretty confident, a couple of internal pairs that have SPED certification that might apply, we don't know, but we're opening it up, we're going to run it in-house and externally simultaneously. If we find someone that has like a master's degree, it will be upwards of $9,500. What's the difference in the initial?
$8,500 to $13,900.
Thank you.
$13,900 being a teacher of 10 years and a master's, worst case scenario, that's what we're...
That's going to be the difference. With this, we want to be sure, and talk to you about, there's an opening for a para, not filling that para position is offsetting the cost, because now we're putting a teacher in that role, if that makes sense.
Instead of.
Instead of, so no one is losing their job, let's be clear there, this is a new position, and due to basically attrition, someone leaving in a position not being filled, that's how this will be placed. Now, we want to be clear, this is for the duration of this school year only, correct, Mr. Whitehead? Correct, yes. This is for this school year, then we're going to reevaluate where the program goes from there.
So what happens, that teacher?
We're going to be upfront and clear, this is to the end of the year, but that doesn't mean that they wouldn't be able to reapply to other positions, or if we keep the program.
Okay. If we hire someone from in-house, then, and we decide we're not going to continue with that position, will they have an option then to go back? To go back?
I don't see why they wouldn't if the position's available, but we're definitely not going to try to cut someone.
Right, right.
But I'm going to be honest with you, we have para positions pretty well open up annually in different areas, it might not be exactly in the same building, but I don't see anyone losing that opportunity to go back. Any other questions on that executive summary? I know Matt, I appreciate Matt and Kelly looking at the finances on that, and John working through the HR component, we think this would be very good for the primary to assist with those behaviors, as you know, we've had influx of students with some behavioral needs, and we think that this will help alleviate some of those in the classroom and streamline instruction.
Because this, sorry, this was not previously approved in the budget, so it's tied to that ahead of time.
Correct.
What will the qualifications be for this role, for this person?
Well, you know, there's different areas of concentration when someone gets certification SPED, normally you have what's called cross categorical, where you can do a lot of different things, except for severely handicapped or, or peak handicapped, those are different kind of riders within your certification, but we're looking for someone that has a skillset that is fine in working with behavior shift and behaviors, and working with behavior students, but there's a whole gamut of what special qualifications could fill a position, but you need to be SPED certified.
Have we developed a job description?
Y'all want to talk about that job descriptions, would it fall under the SPED description we already have?
Yeah, with the understanding though, also with the behavior component to it.
I'm going to, I'm going to write that in the job description, I think somebody with, that's kind of hard for behavior, that, my focus is that's a preference rather than special education certification and a K-6 certification with a heart to be an elementary teacher, you know, it's got to be, our goal is to find, and that's why building in the 10 years with a master's, maybe someone out there may not be a college graduate.
So, if this is approved this evening, it will go public?
Yes, and it won't actually be in effect until the next board meeting in January, when we can bring someone to.
Can you bring that job description with us then too?
Right, because I mean, really, what, what are we saying for sure that a college, did you just say the college, you may not be on it?
No, no.
Oh, I thought...
It may not be a new December graduate.
Okay.
Because we have December graduates.
That's what he said, that's not what he meant.
I'm sorry, no, it's going to be a college.
He left the word December out of that, but...
Somebody that ideally has a strong background in student...
A proven track record, yay, but this is for the primary building?
Correct. This does not take away from the discussions we've been having about trying to get a behavior type classroom for buildings, it's just taken a lot more legwork to develop that program.
And this is a report to Mr. Whitehead?
Well, yes, or that actually we'll report to the building administration, the primary, Amy Castile, up to Matt, John, and myself.
So how soon would this be posted?
Well, we'd hopefully like to get it out, maybe tomorrow.
And you're going to post it, not just district wide?
Correct. It's going to be external, internal and external simultaneously, because of the nature of the position.
Right.
We need to get more time for it to sit out there, get as many applicants as we can.
Point of clarification, the job description is, we have one, it's a special education teacher in Hillsboro, it's no different, the autism teacher, a learning disabled teacher, it's the same job description, in my job...
Posting.
Posting, we're going to...
Extinguish someone.
Special emphasis with...
Correct.
That'll be a preferred school set.
But you never know what the pool will bring forth, too.
Correct.
Okay, so, did we have a motion? Okay. Okay, so the motion is on the floor to approve the addition of a behavior teacher, which would allocate the funds for this position as well. Okay, all in favor? All right, very good. All right, that concludes our open session for this evening, but I do need a motion to recess, so that we can go into executive in just a moment, but we do want to remind you that we will be having a little bit of time to celebrate with our student representatives and wish them well. So, all in favor of recessing? Very good. Thank you for attending this evening. Correct.